Okay. Okay, being about 7:07. Today is April 4th, 2017. This is New Durham Planning Board. My name is Dr. Remy on the chair. And as we normally do, we're gonna go around the room here and introduce ourselves to those in at home. I'll start on my left.
Laura Zisco, administrative assistant.
Bob Krecraft, member.
Jeff Allard, alternate member.
Harry Cheboll, member.
Dot Byzal, member.
David Swenson, selectmen representative.
Next item is a public comment. If there's anyone that has a public comment about something not on tonight's agenda?
Uh, I think I have some time scheduled. I'm Maureen Burkowitz, and I can give it afterwards.
Yes, you are on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, that was a little bit of a question.
Right, okay.
This is not a public comment, but I do have two agenda items to add.
Okay.
Very briefly.
That will be the next item.
Okay. Um, I'd like, probably both go under roles in the business. I'd like to add S- Stratford Regional Planning Commission projects. And both these will take, well, that one might take a little longer, maybe five minutes, but the other one will take about a half a minute. The other was just the Sinon Bacteria Meeting scheduled for mid-April, so. For April 13th, 7:00 PM at the New Durham School, which I'll repeat when we get to that.
Okay, subject. Okay. Edit. Right. Okay.
I have a question, is a preliminary hearing a public hearing? Is that posted as a public hearing?
I think it's just an informal.
It's just an informal.
Discussion.
Okay, all right, you just put it under that.
Yeah, it's just a conceptual discussion. So if there's nothing else, we'll move right into that. So we have a preliminary discussion with Maureen Burkowitz about the possibility of subdivision on Berry Road, map 259 lot 2.
2 and 6.
2 and 6.
Yeah. So, uh, the, um, can I come up here and show you guys?
Your choice, how you wanna do things.
If you need it, we can pull that over.
Oh.
If you'd like, if you'd like to use it.
I don't really need it, I just kinda wanna show you guys what the property looks like.
Okay.
Who would be the first? Maureen Burkowitz, my husband Todd.
Okay.
He lives in Bedford, New Hampshire, and we're hunting for our son, who's looking for his first home, and owns a property in New Durham, that we aren't sure what we can do with. It's a big parcel, and I tried to call to get some information from the town, so the only way is to kinda show up here and ask you guys questions. So I understand you can't give me any answers definite today, but just kinda wanna feel for what the property we can do with. Because a piece of it is landlocked, who's there, I showed this to you. This is lot 2, and this is lot 6, this is Berry Road running. And it's kinda landlocked with all of these other lots around it, and you only have maybe 100 feet to access the back piece.
Which one's 2, the back one?
The back one is 6, and the front one is 2.
Okay.
So, um, there's like, I think 1,600 feet on Berry Road. I don't know what your restrictions are, if we were to subdivide this front parcel, could we make it into three pieces? It's zoned residential or farm recreational, RAR, and one of them is zoned H-R-RECK-50. Does that mean anything?
It's in current use.
I understand we'd have to pull some of it out of current use, but is there any reason we couldn't?
Can I ask a question, is that Ridge Top Road running across down?
It's Berry, but it was called Ridge at one point, yeah.
It was called Ridge.
Ridge Road, now it's Berry.
Okay, but is this Ridge top?
And this is Ridge, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to orient myself.
So Little Limbs down here, so, right?
Yeah, this would be our family valley.
Yeah.
Yeah, Little Limbs down here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's up close to the top, this is the church, probably, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right, so now I know where you're, so great.
So, um, you know, we were contemplating, it's such a big piece, that we would maybe try to subdivide it for three children. Um, but I don't know what the restrictions are. This is 30 acres, if we were ever to subdivide back here, there's no road frontage for that, so is there restrictions? To foot to a subdivision that doesn't have any road on the main road?
That would be a long driveway.
Circulate.
Well, yeah. How much acreage is lot?
With the front, the front two. Lot 6, the big lot is 30 acres at the back, 19 acres at the front.
And that's 100 foot, um?
Yeah, maybe 100 feet. If I, I kinda sketched these out, I couldn't get my printer, the printer didn't have any ink, but this is 154 feet right here on the back of the property, and this is the space that's open, so I'm guessing it's maybe 100 feet.
Well, this is lot 2, and that's lot 6.
And that's lot 6.
Okay.
Also, there's a cemetery on the back here, that, it's not part of the property, but what is, if somebody wants to visit that cemetery, how does that even work?
They need their, as I understand it, there is a state law that says they have to ask your permission, but you're pretty much required to give it to them?
Yes.
If that's their only way to get to it?
Well, it's on your property.
But it's not really on our property.
It's not on your property, but can they get to it through the, through the other lot? Was that other lot landlocked?
They have to cross at least one or two lots.
Yeah, they have to.
Probably the deed for the cemetery is.
Lineal descendants are allowed access to the cemetery.
Right, other lots, lot 3?
You don't have the deed to this property, do you?
Is that lot?
I don't, the real estate is supposed to be mailed in tonight when she gets the chance, but.
Right, but lot, what, looks like lot 3, is that where the cemetery is?
Um, it's, it's.
Or is it lot 26?
When the mackers redid the map, all the cemeteries are kinda like on their own.
Yeah, it's like, it's like half on 26 and half on, on lot 2, yeah.
Oh, there it is, I see it.
It's a little tiny, it's tiny.
I see that now.
I'm assuming it was a family's plot.
That would be through your lot. If it's, if it borders your lot, then I would call that through your lot. That's the easiest access, clearly.
If there's nothing written in the deed that she sends, does that mean that nobody would be able to get up through there?
No.
No, I think there's a state law that says.
There's a law that says lineal descendants have the right to approach the cemetery or to access.
But they have to get your notification, they have to notify you. You pretty much have to, you pretty much have to give that permission.
May that be a high-traffic issue.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just curious to know, like, who maintains the cemetery? Does anybody maintain it?
Not necessarily.
Not really.
Really?
I mean, it's, it's an old, it would depend a little. Some of the old cemeteries are visited every year, if there are known veterans there, and the cemetery committee comes up with a volunteer to put a flag on that stone. That does happen in town.
Okay.
It, it depends on how well-known the cemetery is, how big it is, who's in it, if there's a veteran, and if the cemetery committee wants to, you know, wants to deal with it. But maintaining, is there, is there a 10-inch ash tree in the middle of the cemetery, maybe? Is anyone gonna cut it down? No.
If, if there were safety issues with trees around it, being next to your property, could you take care of them, or?
Yeah.
And/or could you, could you mow a lawn in there if you, if it was an eyesore, or?
If you, I don't think there's any problem with doing that.
There's a 25-foot setback around both cemeteries.
Yeah, there are several restrictions about what you can, uh, building, I think wells, maybe, that there's several things where you are restricted, certain distances around an existing cemetery.
Yeah, we'd probably have to figure that out.
But care and maintenance, I think, would be something that, you know, be open for that.
It's, it's really, I have a cemetery on my land, and it's up to the property owner to maintain it, you know, to create the stone.
Yeah, do you see anything at nighttime?
There's the real question.
Check the phone, Shway.
That's right.
But as long as you're within the setbacks, you could plant a hedge if you wanted to try to give yourself a little screen from that.
I'd have to know, I don't specifically know what the restrictions are. We have to look into that. I don't know them.
I know there are some building restrictions, there's some setback requirements.
There's not property there that I don't think that's gonna be a major issue.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
But your other question is, there's how many acres in the front lot again?
There's 19 in the front and 30 in the back, and, you know, we may never need to use a 30, but just to know what.
These are separate lots, right.
Right, but they're selling together.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not showing them divided here.
No, they're separate but contiguous?
Right, I just sketched that out from the picture.
Right, okay.
He's got the other one.
So it is, there is a boundary line or something.
And how many feet of road frontage, again, you said it, right?
16, 15.
15 to 10?
15, yeah.
15, 10.
That's the one I'm running.
Frontage, I don't think is the issue.
Yeah.
19 acres, you could subdivide that, actually?
Yeah.
Which one's in current use, or is it all in current?
I think it's all in current use.
All in current use.
Okay.
So there is, are you aware of the requirements to bring it out of current use?
I was told it's 10% of the market value of what you pull out, is that correct? How do you determine the market value?
You just bought it.
Is that what determines it?
This is just.
Pretty much.
So you just take the acreage and you divide it by the piece?
Something like that.
The assessor does the calculation and figures out.
We haven't bought it yet, we're here to see what our options are, 'cause we don't wanna buy it, we can't, you know, do what we want with it.
It seems to me that you could divide that in half.
You can, yeah, 19 acres, you could easily divide that.
The issue, the issue that she has is, you know, the issue here isn't, you have 19 acres, the issue here isn't dividing it three ways, I don't think, you still have enough frontage. The issue, I think she's asking about.
How do you get back?
How do you get it back?
How do you get back there and?
Yeah, there is, yeah, and then just.
And do you have, can you subdivide that 30 acres?
Right, I don't know what the driveway limits are, the length of a driveway, and could you make a common driveway?
The issue she's asking is, what about access to that, and how do you work that?
I don't know, you know, I don't know where a driveway can be a common driveway, or has become a road.
Yeah, that's kind of the question.
I don't offhand out of my head know the difference.
The maximum we allow is two, two houses off a shared driveway.
Two houses, shared driveway?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the length maximum? 'Cause that would be, I don't know, a few hundred feet at least.
Is there a maximum?
Shouldn't be a problem with that.
You'd be a driveway.
Yeah, 958 feet, to be precise, is from, if you went from here and you went.
Almost 1,000 feet.
Broad road in here.
Wouldn't be a problem.
So close to, probably somewhere around, near by 1,000 feet. For a driveway, that's pretty well.
Well, every 500 feet, you're supposed to have, it's.
A turnaround for a fire truck or something, right?
Fire, yeah, yeah.
Okay. But it is possible. We're not planning there's subdivision here, but it is possible.
Yes.
But then have a 1,000-foot shared driveway.
Well, there's enough lanyard, you don't even have to have it shared, it looks like to me.
No, if she wants to access the back lot.
If she wants for the back lot, if she wants to make that two.
You can understand that.
If you could make it this way, and this, each one of these could have their separate driveways. This could be a lone driveway back here.
Right, but what if we were to split that in a few different?
Then, then you'd need a shared.
Now it's a shared driveway, and it sounds like.
Now you have two, now you're limited to two.
Two houses would be the likely limit if it's a shared driveway?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we would have to.
We're trying to get to the back lot, you're saying?
Yeah.
Right.
Possibly.
Yeah.
What if we tried to create, make it a road? Would it become a town road, or would it be just a private road, or?
Probably.
Starting to get more complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we're saying you can't do that, it wouldn't become a town road likely, although there are ways to do that, but, but it becomes a different situation, as they said.
Right.
There's a limit on the length of a road, though.
Right.
It's a, it's a.
1,500 feet, right?
Well, that's for a conservation subdivision, it's 1,000 linear feet if it's just a conventional sub. Potentially 1,500 square feet if it's done.
Right, okay.
Conservation.
So, things can be done.
Another thing to keep in mind is, I think you might be in a very steep slopes area. I mean, I think the incline there.
I don't know how it is back here without, we haven't walked the property, I'm going there Friday to do that, so I don't know what this is even like.
These slopes is in there, hold on a second.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna walk that, and then, and walk up and see, but I don't, I don't even know if it's something we could subdivide.
They'll have gorgeous views.
Well, like, right up here, there's a pretty view looking down, like, if you even put your house here, and there's a lot of wooded area right in here. Um, so you could have a private house if you want, and then, I don't know how we're gonna subdivide it, but if you, if you do subdivide it, are you, how much frontage do you need? Like, if we were to take it and put it at different angles, does it make a difference, or?
It, it depends on the acreage of the lot, so if it's, and our, our, our town requirements are also based on soil-based lot sizes, so the size of the parcels and every feet per pound of the soil types, which has to do with their subbit capabilities.
Yep.
So your waste disposal. If, if they divide it three ways, just evenly, lots, 16 and lots, if they divide it evenly. Yeah, I mean, for, for anything over 10 acres, 400, um, 400 linear feet of, of, 400 feet of, um, road frontage is acceptable. So you could divide it theoretically into at least three, three lots.
Right.
With existing Berry Road frontage.
I don't.
Second, the steep slope issue?
Yeah.
Um, what do we just go?
Pardon?
I lost it.
Yeah, if it's over 15% slope, there are additional regulations. When are, are over 15%?
They just had you a second ago.
Very.
Right here.
Yeah, right here and here.
So, the yellow parts?
Yeah.
On the back lot?
Yep.
Are between 15 and 25% slope?
Yeah.
So, you can build on that, but you would have to come here for a permit to do that.
Just on that area?
In that area, yeah.
Okay.
If you worked around it, you know, you could subdivide, cut that in half, and, you know, put a slot somewhere.
Keep that current use on that side, so that you can access the loan.
Scott, when you say come here for a permit, are you saying that she would need?
It looks like she, it looks, it looks, based on this, that she would probably need, she might be able to work, you know, sneak, sneak a couple things in there,
Design, design.
but you might need to come here for a steep slope permit.
Okay.
Still possible to do, but I can't answer that definitively, but there are some steep slopes on the property, but it's not all steep.
Okay.
Another consideration is, um, I, I haven't seen any maps that show wetlands there, but there might be some, because of the nature of the, the steepness of the terrain there, sometimes you get seepage areas where groundwater tends to seep out, and those are considered wetlands, so there are some restrictions via the state, and we also have to follow those, which may limit what you can do with certain areas of property. So, while you have a large chunk of land, there might be some site-specific constraints. If you had, if you already had somebody do a wetland assessment on there, you'd have that information, but it's something to consider.
I think we're good on that, we're looking through the maps here.
Yeah, but that won't show the seepage on that.
Yeah, it's not, 'cause we don't have a ground water.
But it is, there's no wetlands?
Well, there's nothing large on those maps.
But it could be some perennial ones?
There could be, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's hard to tell, it's all open field when you're looking at it, so.
So it may, it may not be, I'm just throwing that out there, because that is something that could come up, yeah, consideration.
So the setback for building around the cemetery, 75 feet?
75 feet.
No building within 7, no building or wells within 75 feet, no new roads within 25 feet of the right-of-way of an existing cemetery. So if there's a right-of-way, you can't build a new road within 25 feet of that. And it does say, access to any cemetery shall be allowed to lineal descendants and/or authorized maintenance personnel. It's pretty vague, but.
Right.
That's right.
Um, and then, can I ask you guys one more question? On that, um, you can see, I think you have the, you can see there's a right-of-way to that back parcel.
Over here.
Yes, now, what does that mean exactly? Because it's on 7, but it connects to 5. So, let's say we were to buy this, and then we were to sell that off later, could somebody access that through these other two pieces?
That's what it suggests. I'm not gonna say I know exactly what that means.
You just look at the deed.
Is it a deed in right-of-way?
Right.
I believe so, I looked up, one of the ladies at the town office helped me figure out how to go onto deeds and read it, it was a little confusing to me, what the terminology was, but it looks like that, uh, the people that owned it could access it from both, from what I went, from both 5 and 7, I think.
Okay.
But could they ever put a road into it? What does a right-of-way mean exactly?
Right, right to pass through?
How wide, how wide is a right-of-way?
I don't know, there's no indication on here, anything about.
Can't, can't answer the question until you see the deed, so.
Yeah, you'd have to.
The deeds on those two pieces?
Yeah.
Not the deed on this piece? But information should be in both?
You look at all of them.
All, yeah.
But the key thing is the deed on the piece you're looking at, does it give you a right of, a right to cross that property?
Right.
It would have to be in your deed, and I guess in their deeds as well.
Yeah, right, it would be in both.
All right, I would've had that information that she had, been able to email to me that she was traveling.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, Todd, is there anything else?
You were gonna add something, God, I apologize, you were gonna add something before, and I just don't know what you were gonna add.
Let me rewind. No, I think probably what I was gonna suggest is, um, this is just me as a private citizen speaking, before I made the investment in this piece of land, I would speak to an engineer.
Right.
Yeah.
We plan on doing that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they would know the constraints, yeah, zoning constraints, and could really give you a good estimate of what, what sort of things you could do with this land. I think it's got a lot of potential, though.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see why you couldn't get three nice pieces of property out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we were to split it three ways, that would put it under 10 acres per parcel, so all of that would come out of current use, right? You have to have 10 acres to keep it in current?
Correct, you have to have 10 acres.
For that front lot, yes.
Now, what if we were to, 'cause, 'cause we have a child who's ready to build, and we have two children that are probably gonna be a while before they do. If we were to just, at this point, split it into two parcels, one large parcel and one smaller parcel for him to build on, we could leave the rest in current use and subdivide that piece later, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Would be no restrictions on that one, you're not limited to how many times you can subdivide, are you?
Well, that's a good question, can you take a piece of, this is one tax map, can you take a piece of it out, Laura?
Take a piece of, if you do a subdivision, it's become an individual lot, that one, take it out.
Right.
But if you did a three-lot subdivision, and you only put the one lot into your son's name, and it was the furthest one away, and the other two are still contiguous, that's still over 10 acres, and it stays in current use until you actually do something with that third lot.
Which would make a lot of sense.
All right.
Then it would all have to come out.
Gotcha.
And you could, you could subdivide the front lot into three, and your back lot could still say, stay in current use.
Stay in current use.
Right, that's.
Could you, could you combine, like, let's say we took from this point forward and just split this piece off, could you combine these two lots to become one, and then the whole thing would be in current use?
You could do a merge.
Yeah. Can you do lot line?
You could do a merge.
Adjustments and merge lots, if possible.
If we were to do something like that, and he were to build on like a two or three-acre piece in the front, the rest of it could stay in current use, is that how that works?
That's my understanding from what Laura says.
What you're doing there is, you're, you're doing like three things, one is you're dividing the 19-acre piece into two.
Yeah.
You are then dividing, you know, a piece of that 19, which you just divided into a buildable lot, taking it out carriers.
Yeah.
You're merging the remaining part to another lot.
Yeah.
And, and calling that current use then too, so there's several steps here that you wanna make sure you're thinking through.
Right, because that might be hard to undo later.
Well, it could be, you know, you can do it, it's just make sure you think through those steps.
Okay.
These two pieces of land are up for sale together?
Yeah.
Are they, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm assuming because whoever's selling them probably figures no one's gonna wanna buy that once that one piece is gone. You can't get to it, yeah.
But if it has rights of way.
It's probably not.
On neighboring properties, maybe that's how you get around the separation.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe the driveway could come in from another piece of land that you have right to use.
I gotta look at the deeds. Depends on what kind of right it's.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Might just be the way to.
It's the right to access, maybe, though.
Right, yeah, we don't wanna.
Right, well, it's not a right. The, um, you know, there's a house over here, but this is all open field, and there's a stone wall, I mean, you could probably easily pull a road in without affecting too much of somebody's property if you needed to, I would think. But if you were to come and knock a lot 7, there's a long way to go to get back there.
Right.
But I think there's a.
Yeah, you might be able to come off this end.
Those are options, just so you can.
Of this end.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Not to build a road.
When they put a right-of-way in, is it stuck to where it is on that map, or is it anywhere you can conveniently get?
It's usually defined, it is usually defined as to where it is.
Yeah, okay.
And the width and all that stuff.
Right.
Okay.
You can access us going on the website, and looking at the original plat, the surveyor's map that would be registered in Stratford County. You can access that, put in the tax lot numbers, and it will show you the original, and that would more clearly define where the right-of-way is.
Okay, all right, I'll play along with that some more. Good, um, any, any questions?
No.
Do you wanna ask anything about the back, that piece that's across the street?
No, I'm good.
For 39?
No.
'Cause they could look to see the wetlands on that.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm good.
No?
Just got an engineer.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We appreciate everything, thank you for taking the time.
Yes, we really do.
Okay.
Good luck, good luck, yes.
Yeah, we take it for granted.
There you go.
Now, anything else you guys think we should know, or that we might, we should've asked and we didn't?
That's a wide-open question, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can even answer that question. One, one other thing you can do is talk with, um, public safety officials, because where the driveways come out, that's something that ultimately has to be considered, they're the ones that'll make those, those sorts of decisions, the fire chief and the police chief, just to get a general sense, or the, and the highway department.
Right.
Okay.
'Cause you need a certain.
Depending on what you're looking at. And if you, if you're looking at getting an engineer involved, or some professional, you know, they can help you out in that regard too, but there are some other officials in town that you can talk with to get their perspective. There's any, any things that raise red flags in terms of where you might wanna position the, the various lots?
Okay.
Yeah, driveways have to have sufficient site distance and all that, yeah.
They would be going through a rock, rock wall too, that you were bringing up earlier, kind of.
Yeah, apparently there's no restrictions.
Well, that's good, because the whole thing's a rock wall. But I hope you think for it.
We took a drive down the street, so that's the school for K through twelve?
Yeah.
No, 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 K through six.
K through six.
It's a regional middle school and high school. That's in Wolfborough.
Okay, so they go to Wolfborough.
Okay.
Yes.
That's good.
Very good school down the road, very good.
Good.
Yeah.
I grew up in Washington, New Hampshire, which is about the same size as this town, so I loved the small school feel.
No, it's a very good school, very collegial atmosphere there, yeah. Your grandchildren, children, grandchildren, I guess you're saying if it's your son, that's better, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And you have.
He was gonna be, yeah, so be a few more years.
Well, I think they'd be very happy there, get a very good education.
Okay.
Good.
Is there anything else, like, town, town-wise besides?
I see you both are Patriots fans, and that's really, isn't it?
That's key. I actually do a lot, which is why I saw her.
Oh.
Do a lot, what did you say?
We do a lot of things with the press.
Ah.
We're into their charities and all that stuff.
Cool.
They're really nice people.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Um.
Can I take a second and just say, ask where Bedford you live?
In Bedford, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
We're, um, you know where McAlvey's school is?
Uh-huh.
We're off of, uh, Barrington.
Yeah, we're right around the corner from Dean Cameron's house.
Yeah, okay. It's just, um, my son lives in Bedford, okay.
Oh, where is he in Bedford?
Um, whoa, did my mind just go blank? He lives on Winter Drive.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's in the center of Bedford. Yeah, it's on that side. It's a nice town. We also have a place in Gilbert.
We're, we're gonna be moving out of Bedford very soon, so.
Yeah. Our, our kids are grown up now, and we have this big house with no kids.
Well, we appreciate you looking in in Durham. We would welcome you when you're ready to make that decision, we would.
Okay.
We like the town. It's really nice here.
Yeah.
Cool.
Like to drive around a little bit more, stay a little bit more of it. But this is pretty much the center, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of hiking trails.
It's a nice kind of town.
There's a lake, a very meaning lake, which is about five miles from here.
Yeah.
Still in Durham.
Yeah.
So there's a lot to do.
You just saw it.
It's a nice town.
You are entering, you are leaving.
Right.
Right.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
There we go.
Are you ready?
Yes.
It's loose and no longer mean.
Okay, so, next item is the Penny Williams Conditional Use Permit, a continuation of the hearing from last time. So, uh.
Take care.
Thank you.
Nice.
You got stuff from the engineer. You got the maintenance manual, drainage report, and some eleven-by-seventeen plan. The only thing that changed on the plan was added a note. She's got two pages two in there. That's the scene one that says page two, and you're seeing a revision in it. Probably even next one. You don't have it right there. That's the revision, that's what it added to note.
Okay. All right. So what is the note?
Most of these conditions are after the reclamation, grab of that. You know, confirmed during after work, it's slope ratio equals three to one. Verify the appropriate top soils result during construction.
Code six and seven. We got five.
Right here.
So was all the reference to Meredith in the operations and maintenance manual typed those, or is that a manual for Meredith? It kind of reads like it should be in your Durham, but, and then there's the header, map two forty, lot thirty-seven, Meredith.
Mm-hmm.
And that's fine. But she just used a template.
Oh, is that what she did?
Yeah, it looks like.
This was.
I, I haven't even seen it. I.
This was done, it looks like it was done previously for a client in Meredith.
Not just a few Merediths left behind.
Where do you see that?
It's on the headers of all pages.
Top, right-hand corner.
The header of that.
Oh.
After every map and lot number, it says Meredith.
Oh, yeah, but the, the, the front.
Right.
It's a generic maintenance?
Right.
Oh. You know how computers are copy and paste, and you don't see the other stuff that you don't change?
Right.
And then at the end of the very first paragraph on the first page.
Yeah.
Stabilization of subject property in Meredith, New Hampshire. So, yeah. So what does this mean? This is a manual, and it says, this is how things should be done. Does this mean this is what will be done on this property, or?
Who says?
Right, so, so this actually.
Assuming, assuming the property's in Durham.
Yes.
Okay, okay, this, it just seems, it, it lists it as kind of, this is how you should do this. But it doesn't say in here that I read, this is what will be done. It's reading like it is a manual, like a generic manual.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I'm just not sure.
Well, it says the very first paragraph, it is just an operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management system.
Okay.
So it would be up to the homeowner, it would be owners to follow the manual. And then wasn't there supposed to be different check, wasn't there supposed to be a timeframe that was gonna be checked after six months or something like that?
It is, which, it's in here. So activities on page three, activity, frequency, when.
Getting at the, the question, you brought, the point you brought, one thing that, that's gonna have to be out of this, this plan is, at the end, a certification signed by the owners, so there's gonna be a, a signature page, but a certification signed by the owners attesting to their commitment to comply with the operation and maintenance plan.
Okay.
So that is a requirement.
Somehow this has to become a contract to the requirement or something.
Yeah. This is right out of our ordinance, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So a signature block for the owner.
Right.
On which plan?
Just the operation and maintenance.
Oh, on the manual?
On the manual.
Right, right, yeah.
So it's signature, and, and does it say, signature and agree to comply somehow?
Yeah, well, it says a testing to their commitment.
A testing to their commitment.
To comply with the operation and maintenance plan, so.
It's article six, paragraph C seven.
C seven?
C seven.
And that spells out what the bill should say?
Yeah.
Okay.
And technically, there is the ordinance, but then we have a complimentary regulation. So this is, this is laid out in the regulations, stormwater management and erosion control regulations.
That's where you are?
Yes.
Oh, you're in the regulations, not the, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I said the ordinance. And it might actually state the very same.
Is this in, is it what?
So this is in the stormwater.
Stormwater regulations?
Regulations?
Yeah. It's complimentary to the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so somehow they need to indicate that they agree to comply with this.
Yeah, that's, that's what the certifications should be doing.
Right, right.
Any next question for the two checks, to be reconciled?
Yeah, I was just, I was just thinking about when.
Who's responsible for?
Several years ago, when Arthur was our CEO, he started building a database of lots that have these O and M manuals, because if it changes hands when the property is sold, it's up to him to verify.
Yeah.
That the new owner, or present owner, is, is complying.
Well, basically what you need is a log of all stormwater maintenance.
Right.
Manual agreements, if you will.
Right. I don't know if you know anything about any, anything like that, because there are several in town. There's at least.
I went through.
Somewhere between a half dozen and twelve in town at this point.
When we were changing building inspectors for a lot.
Yeah.
I went through the, I was tasked with going through that computer and checking to see what we had for files.
Right.
And trying to put them in some kind of organization.
Right.
Um, I can get on that computer and see if there was something in there. I don't remember, you know, what all the documents were.
Right.
And stuff, I just.
Yeah, what I would like, I'm like, I made a note here too, to, to talk to. But what I'd like the minister to show for this meeting is that the planning board has requested, uh, either the building of that log or to look at that log and have it reviewed systematically. But I think the building of the log is probably what we need right now, just to.
How would you build that log?
Pardon?
How would you build that log? You'd have to go through every plan you had signed.
Yep.
Over, over the past, what, five years or something?
Yeah, since we've had our stormwater regs.
Right.
Unfortunately, I don't know how.
It's, it doesn't go back that far, but yeah. And then, and then there are a couple other, other locations, like Johnson has a, a BMP, this is predating our, our stormwater management.
Yeah.
But associated with the, the large parking area. There's an area to collect oil and some other, other potential contaminants.
Over Johnson's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a couple of places like that.
Right.
Well, you know, just a review of, well, all permits, I guess, for the last X years since, since the ordinance came in.
Right.
And see which ones have that requirement. And then probably come back, maybe be good to have the CEO meet with the planning board to, you know, say, okay, here's a one that we remember, Johnson's, or someone else, et cetera. So then you have that kind of step.
Okay. So you want the CEO, the co-enforcement officer to create this law, or you want me to create this law?
Uh, probably together. Probably need to do it together.
Yeah.
I was out for a cop-out.
Yeah. Yeah, Johnson's had one, the Flight Deck probably has one.
Yeah, it does.
There were a couple up on North Shore Road.
Yeah.
That had, had them.
Yeah, some driveways coming in up there.
I don't think so.
Yeah, and whenever there's previous payment.
That, that lot, across from Paul's place.
Yeah.
When was the ordinance put into effect?
Uh, you don't know what happened.
Two thousand eleven, something like that.
Five-plus years.
Does Carla have this?
It does, yes.
Yeah.
Carla has it.
Yeah.
Anything with steep slopes, if you ask for a word.
Yeah.
But, but you're looking at something in order of five to six-year permit review.
Right.
Probably not a lot.
Right.
Still, I'm not, I'm not trying to trivialize it either. I know it's gonna be a lot of work, but.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna be talking, you know, a thousand properties either, so.
No, what I have to do is go back five, six years into the minutes of the meetings.
Right.
Pull all the ones they came up for you, and then I go look up the map and lot holders and see what your.
Yeah, you could do a word search, you know, and, and up some, yeah.
Right.
Scott, is it worth going through the checklist that's in the minutes that we developed last time?
We had ten conditions.
Right, right.
Most of them are for after construction or during construction.
Yeah.
The ones that I am here tonight to show you are.
Number three.
Or.
That's the one we just went over.
Right, yeah.
The shoreline permit is, is completed, he signed the application, and it's gonna go off to the state. So it's in the process.
Right.
Or we said, when that, when the state's approved, that give us a copy.
Yeah. Uh, I originally gave you guys a sloped map, which I think would be sufficient for the, for the next one there.
Where the students cannot take place, is that what you're talking about?
Right. So here, I labeled all the different slopes. So it shows where you can't build, you know, fifty percent slopes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it says something here, drill hole set and rebar set.
What is this?
The black, those are two ponds, or standing water, in time.
Okay. I can read any of the print on this.
Most of that small print was just areas, so that I could do my calculations.
Is the language on here indicating easily do not disturb areas?
It will, I can add that.
Okay, that's what we should have on this plan specifically referencing those.
So over here with the color, it can say, do not.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Whatever that applies.
Right.
Yeah.
What's that? What's that button? I'm trying to make choice for a building.
Right, right there.
Right in the matter.
And that was what he had pointed out, and that's something, right?
Right, yeah, does it probably be in this?
It actually shouldn't just say development, it should be land alteration, short of basically forestry practices. It should be no disturbance, is what that is. Because that's getting that development, just to make sure there's not a loophole there.
Yep.
What, where are you saying that, Bob?
For these, these steep slope areas.
For the do not disturb pieces.
It should be disturbance, yeah.
Right.
Disturb, disturbance associated with site preparation or something like that along those lines.
So what do you want it to say? Do not disturb.
Well, you could use, let's see, what are these called, steep slope, or, steep slope or stormwater management.
There you go. Right. No, stormwater, sorry. But.
But this is actually, so it is disturbance.
Yeah. No disturbance allowed, right?
Yeah, if there's minor, they've already, they've already altered things. So they've, they've wiped out their threshold already. So it should just be do not disturb for, for these slope classes at this point. Because there's exempts, but they've already hit that threshold. So I'd just say do not disturb these steep slope, if they wanted.
Anything colored or just?
Yeah, anything colored, based on what they've already done. They've already exceeded these thresholds.
Right.
So if they wanna do something later, it would have to, at a bare minimum, be conditional use permit if it was even gonna be permissible. So they would have to come back to us for that.
Yeah.
Which is always an option if it's not extremely steep.
Right, okay.
Well, Bob, does that apply to the, that driveway going in? Because that goes right through.
Well, we're getting conditional use for that right now, right?
Yeah, that's.
Right.
So that, that's what would've been upfront, but we're dealing with it after the fact. So I'm saying they've already exceeded their threshold.
Okay.
Of what should be, should've been allowed. So basically, no more being allowed unless they come to us and ask for permission.
Okay.
On those steep-sloped areas.
Right.
Is what I'm saying.
Right.
So there's still a lot of white area in there.
Right. Yeah.
Well, basically, it says no disturbance allowed on any colored section.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I just leave it, some areas aren't gonna be allowed no matter what. I'm not sure. It would be up to debate, but I, I think it would have to be a case-by-case scenario. I mean, in here, there's, there's certain areas that aren't permitted at all.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent certainly.
Right.
I mean, I, I think the statement that no disturbance allowed on any colored section is, covers the whole thing. And then, should something in the future say, I'd like to do this, I mean, property owner always has the right to come forward and say, I'd like to do this. What can we do? So I don't think you need anything else other than saying no disturbance allowed.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
On that, we had, had a note, they know disturbance allowed in colored areas.
Right.
Yeah.
Back, back to bullets one and two. Confirmed during after all work with the slopes, no worse than three to one. Verified that appropriate top soil amounts in place. Whose task was doing that? That's obviously a town activity.
Yeah.
That's after, that's after the building too.
Right. It's a condition for the final approval, right?
Someone's gonna, from the town will have to verify that for the final approval, whether it be the building inspector or CEO.
Yeah, that'll be a CEO. Okay, okay.
So like before a certificate of occupancy?
Elizabeth's conditions can be put into the map and lot folder.
Right.
So as he's going through the permitting process, he can make sure that they're meeting all of those conditions.
Right.
Okay. So bullet three is partially complete, except it needs that signature and attestation that they will comply.
Yeah.
The shoreline permit from DES, is that required for the, what do you, what's the first permit, conditional or, or, what's it called, Scott? When you, when.
That's.
There's a first permit that allows them to do the work.
Condition?
And then there's a second permit that's the final, right, after it's done.
For state?
No, for the town. Don't, don't we issue?
That's not, well, that's not what we're talking about here. The shoreline permit, that's the DES permit.
That's a state.
State permit.
Well, that's a state permit.
That's a state.
Their only requirement now is to submit it to us once it's been received from the state approved.
But is that required for them to get going, or is that only required?
Just because we're within two hundred and fifty feet, we have to apply for the.
Have to apply for it.
That's covered under state.
Right. But does Durham have to have that copy before they can get started, or can they get started and this is only needed for the final?
No, we'll probably need that shoreline permit, building inspector.
Yeah, they need a permit to get started.
Other immediately.
Construction, yeah.
Right. We need to see it before we give you final approval.
Final approval will be.
Well, final approval, you have to do reclamation everything until we've got that permit.
Right.
To start the work.
Right.
Do the work, then you guys come inspect and give the final approval.
All right, all right. Show on the plan where disturbances cannot take place, that's what we just.
That's what we just did.
Right.
Conservation commission.
Have they, have they seen this?
They did, uh, met the last Tuesday of the month, so what was that, last week? And they gave the, the go ahead, I wrote it down and I, there was a motion to endorse the plan.
Okay.
So they, the commission.
They had no further, they had no further condition comments.
They saw the list of requirements.
That's the key to note on this, the conservation committee had no further condition comments.
Right. Okay.
And Swans as always is no doubt taking detailed notes, correct?
Well, I don't know about that, but enough, enough for me to trigger, I recall what might have happened. Besides that, we have a recording.
Right.
Get the movie.
In the root. Note on drawing where test pit location is.
Right, I'm looking for that and I don't see it.
Is that on a drawing? There's something here about drill hole.
I don't see a marking for it though. It should be a circle.
Oh, so.
It should look like your logo, right?
Look at that.
The test pit?
Test pit.
Where you look like test pit.
Yeah, it looks like your logo. Right there. Well, I gotta make it bigger.
Okay, yeah.
And, but I did want to show that we were a hundred and twenty-five feet from the, from the shore and more than seventy-five from that wet one right there.
Somewhere here.
That's right there.
Yeah, make that.
I'm gonna make that larger.
Make that more clear.
That's it.
And associate, um, and test pit results.
In with these, with these test pit results are pictures that I took and be requested of the two public to make sure they weren't. Any erosion, it really wasn't, I went after that storm.
That we just had last week, all that rain.
Well, just, just for the record, the test pit results were submitted and the conclusion was that it was acceptable.
Yeah. Okay.
So at this point, we don't need a, a result that says it's one bedroom, three bedrooms, whatever, just that. It's suitable for a sewage disposal segment. And then the provide visual confirmation, that's another one at the end, right?
No, this is the photo.
Before and after.
Oh, before and, yeah, okay. But that's going to be a requirement for the final.
That's what the photos here were to show that no erosion now.
Okay, this is the.
I can see with all the snow, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure.
No erosion.
Do we want updated photos after the snow melts?
I think before, before final approval, if we get the final photos and they look good, that's.
Yeah.
Cause like if there's any big storms, you'll see if anything washes out.
Okay. And then evidence at end of growing season, that's a final.
Yeah.
And the last is just a requirement.
Okay.
So to get started, it sounds to me like finishing the operating, operating maintenance plan, the manual.
Give you the directions you asked for tonight, show them in a permit.
And the shoreline permit.
Couple modifications on the drawing, you know, for adding Uniteds.
Guys have asked for it.
Yeah.
Now, don't the operation manuals usually have an actual checklist? I mean, there kind of is, but it's not really set up like a, like a log. Aren't there usually pages that, that looks like a log?
Typically do have that.
Right, so it says ding ding ding.
That's the thing, this reads just as, you know, this is a textbook.
Sometimes, yeah, it, it, yes and no.
It's not what are they going to do?
Well.
Like maintenance calendar.
Right.
As needed, winter, months.
Right, that, do we want to have this calendar reformatted to make it like a log that an owner would say, okay, it's the spring of this year and I write the date down. I've done this check, right? That's how it's supposed to look.
Yeah.
It's supposed to look more like a form that the owner can use to maintain it. You know what I mean?
I've never seen it, but I got an idea what you mean. I don't do the manuals, so I don't see.
Okay. Cause that's how we've done them in the past, if I remember right.
And it does make sense if someone's.
Right, that, cause the homeowner's got to do this, homeowner's not an engineer. So they need to be able to figure out how to do this.
Maintenance log.
Right, there needs to be a log based on, based on what I'm seeing in table one.
Maintenance log added to the manual.
Yep. Based on your table one on page three.
Yeah, normally it would just be like observe, observe conditions, there'd be a comment, then correct about it or something.
Right, inspection, every major storm event. You know.
I mean, it seems to me what, this manual should be revised from the textbook description to.
Well, I think it's a little more, I think it's a little more specific than that, but there is, does seem to be a little, a little bit of.
Yeah. I mean, like the last page. Trouble shooting. Well, does that mean that this is what will be done, or this is what might be nice to be done if these things happen?
Well, trouble shooting if it, if it happens.
It's the same thing.
This.
I've never seen a troubleshooting part. Is this usually in these? I've never seen that.
That's a bonus.
I don't remember seeing a troubleshooting part.
Not, not usually.
I mean, at least for the homeowner, probably typically not.
Right.
It's a fairly simple BNP that they're putting in place.
Right.
You're not like a being there, cause I kind of like this suggestion.
No, no, no.
I was gonna say. I mean, like if you were a homeowner, you not know some of these things.
My issue is just how this is constructed. You know, in general, sediment removal should occur during the dry season when it is not wet. Well, the question is, what are you going to do?
Right.
Does that mean that this is what's going to occur on this piece of land? This is just kind of general guidance. How one might go about, you know, doing rain garden and erosion control. But it, it's not a plan for what's going to happen on this piece of property.
Well, wouldn't the log being attached to the maintenance calendar help?
That would.
Because you'd be.
That would.
Yeah, so I think if they just add the log, move to a power to ask for, it'd be fine.
Well, at a minimum, if you could transform the maintenance calendar into an actual calendar for this piece of property.
Right, that, that's a key.
That, that would help.
Well, we have to know when the, when construction started.
Right, they don't.
Well, it's hard to say what that calendar's gonna look like right now.
Right.
Right.
Actually, some, I hear what you're saying Jeff, some simple language like in the event a seller personnel should come, comes from the rain garden. Owner can do or will do.
Owner will do the following remediation.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of in two different areas here.
Right.
One is table one, which is on page three.
Right.
Which I think the, where is the log, where the log applies, I think that's what you're looking for, for a log.
Right. This needs to be transformed into a.
It'll do it, yeah, a log and a sign off or something, initials or whatever.
Right.
You know, date and initials or something. And then you have the troubleshooting chart, which is, I mean, you only need that if you have to troubleshoot. So I don't know how you schedule that.
I don't think you can, I just think it's a nice thing for the homeowner.
Yeah, that could, that could certainly be included, cause when you do your inspection and you find this happening. You know, you have an idea of what.
So maybe on your log, you, you had any troubleshooting issues detected?
Yeah.
And, and how remedied or something. So, you know, I think on the calendars, table one, you have something on the order of the date and a, and a sign, and a sign off or, you know, initials or whatever. And then a comment that said troubleshoot. And any notice of change or not. And then table two, there's a reference piece if you need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, approximately when will it be performed and then a sign off on table one? Yeah, and I, and I think you're right. The things like that final table on the last page, that can come under the certification that we need, that will require, that they're going to agree that they'll follow this, this plan.
Right. Okay.
That should work. So I think it's just the three things outstanding, right? Changes to the operation and maintenance manual.
Yeah.
Obtain the shoreline permit.
Yeah.
And show on plan where disturbances cannot take place.
Well, add, add the statements on that plan. He's already showing it, you just have to add the statements.
Right.
I think those are the three outstanding.
Well, yeah, but on the manual, it's more than the logs, it's a certification and sign off.
Right.
It's the log.
Right.
I'm gonna make sure you have something.
Those two things, right. Okay.
Okay.
And let's see what else.
Was there, was there anything else once that we wanted to require? Those three things for sure. The rest are things at the end, I think.
Uh, that's it, let's see.
I think it's those three things that should allow you to get started.
Topsoil's at the end and he's already done one, yep, I think those are, that's what I have, based on the ten point list that we have.
Right.
Yes, those.
We got those three things. And then the processes, the planning board issues a conditional permit, something permit?
Okay. Yeah.
So get a conditional approval.
Conditional on those things getting done before you get a final to final.
Finals after construction.
Right.
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 So we're ready for a motion, a motion to conditionally, right, conditionally approve the conditional use permit?
Well.
Right?
It's a tongue tie.
With those three, and those are the three conditions.
If those three things are done.
Conditional approval.
Well, no construction started before the, the three things, you have this in there in the shore, the shoreline permit's included in that three here.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, so those three things are required for the conditional permit.
Yeah.
So we're approving the conditional permit with those three conditions, when those three conditions are met.
Did you just make that motion?
Of asking for it?
I.
You just made that motion Jeff?
I can't.
Right.
No, you can't.
I would love to, but I can't.
No, hold on.
One of you will have to.
Swans will take care of it.
I think Swans has got it.
There you go.
He's calculating it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, it's complete enough to, to make sure we understood it.
Honest to God. While he's designing the motion, I have a question, if we should need conditional permit to Penny Williams? And my understanding is the property's going to be sold before it's built on? Is that what you said?
Probably.
That's the plan.
Okay. So then we are going to be dealing with someone else.
Yeah.
For the.
Only if they have to come here.
Right, if they want to subdivide the property or do anything else, build in a, steep area or something.
If they're building and they're not in any slopes, they don't have to come here, you have to get the building permit.
Right.
So they don't have to come back unless there's any issues.
How do we know the conditional, conditional use permit, the conditions of the conditional?
It won't be sold until all this is done.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Right, and they can't get the final permit until.
Until it's all done and inspected.
Right.
Right, they won't sign off on the final conditional permit.
I know, I just wanted to know if he sold it before that point.
No, 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 it won't be sold till all this is done.
All right, okay. Got it.
I'm just about ready there.
Okay.
Now, what I'll do is I'll just state the motion without it being official yet to make sure that everybody.
Yeah.
Feels like we have it complete. So I would make a motion as a draft here.
Yeah.
Uh, to approve the conditional use permit for map two forty lot thirty-seven, subject to, um, three conditions. And then conditions that are, would be at the end of all the work being completed. Three conditions being revisions to the operating plan to include a log, a certified sign off page, and town name correction. Receipt of the New Hampshire DES shoreline permit. In addition to the existing slopes plan. A statement that says no disturbance allowed on any colored section.
Right. The, the operating and maintenance plan.
Uh, yeah.
Did you also have the certification that they will comply?
That's what the certification and sign off page is.
Okay.
That's in the manual and on the plan.
Right.
And the, and the law.
That's on the manual.
But the, one of the notes on the plan should be that there is an O and M plan, right?
Yeah, typically that is, yeah.
No, on that, on her plan, it is the operating.
So that'll be.
Yeah, that should be one of the notes on the plan.
Yeah.
That there is an O and M.
That's a good point.
Well, let's type it up. Operation.
Note on the plaque, sorry, on the plaque. Should be one of the notes saying that.
That's how the plan would be.
That an O and M plan has been filed or.
They have to.
Is it, is it, is it effect or is in place?
Right, yeah, there needs to be a note on the plaque stating that there is an O and M plan in place and.
To be followed.
Needs to be certified, how does that word, where do you go? Is certified with the, certified by the owner and carries with the land or something like that?
Yeah, newers to the new landowner.
Yeah. There's some wording to that.
Transfer us to any subsequent owners?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay.
The note needs to say that. Uh, we're trying to find a wording here.
Okay.
You can, you can give me the wording, I can put it on the plan.
So what I said is add to the, well, again, this is just subject to, to discussion here. Add to the, add to the notes on the plan that an operating and maintenance plan is in place and is to be followed and transferred to any subsequent owner.
Yeah.
And we'll put that on, on her plan, you have the overall proposed condition site plan.
Yeah. Okay.
If you look in the stormwater regs. Section, article six. Uh, C. Paragraph C. It says the O and M plan contents.
Okay.
And it lists all the things there and item seven is the certification signed by the owner attaching to their commitment to comply with the O and M plan. That's that certification letter we need.
Right.
So we're all set with that wording, I've added that piece at the end.
Yeah.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready?
Here she rolls. I will make a motion to approve the conditional use permit on map two forty lot thirty-seven. Subject to four conditions and as follows. Revisions to the operating and maintenance manual to include a log, certification and sign off page, and the town name corrected. Number two, receipt of the New Hampshire DES shoreline permit. Number three, addition to the existing slopes plan, the statement that quote, no disturbance allowed on any colored section, end of quote. And four, add a note to the overall condition site plan that quote, an operating and maintenance plan is in place and is to be followed. And transfers to any subsequent owner, end of quote. And then also subject to the, the conditions that were previously noted. Which would not be done until the plan is complete, until the, uh, work is complete.
Required for the final.
Right. So that's my motion.
Okay, do we want to list those, those final motions?
Part of the motion, okay, since it hasn't been second, I can still do that, I just have to call them up here. So, uh, upon word completion, those conditional pieces are verification that appropriate topsoil amounts are in place. And other materials necessary are used to retain topsoil along with verification that the required vegetation is used to provide the design plans intent. Evidence of end of growing season, the vegetation is retained and design is functioning as planned. And with the understanding that any acceptance of this application and decisions relative to this application do not imply in any way towards approval of any subsequent activity on this property.
And do you have the slope ratio? And do you have the slope ratio no worse than three to one?
Uh, he already did that as part of his plan, I think, right?
Yeah.
That's already done.
Right, okay, but I thought that was confirmed at the end, that had to be confirmed at the end.
Okay, well, okay, we'll add that as part of the motion, then that, a final confirmation that after all work is done, that the slope ratio is no worse than three to one.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Do you want to repeat that?
I'll second that.
Second doc?
How succinct would you like me respond? What part of "and"?
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Who seconded, by the way?
I. The doc. All right? Good.
Two, three, four, five, zip. You don't have to leave so soon.
How does it work?
All right. Where are we? Lost my page.
There you go.
Uh... Minutes, first and third.
I don't want to have anybody surprised, but I do have a few.
I am just shocked.
I know. Ready to roll? I don't have anything on page one. I don't have anything on page one.
Oh my God.
Any?
Ten? All right, I do have something on page two.
Okay.
We're all set for page two?
Did you miss yours, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good.
You got it?
I put my name.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, for page two, are you all on page one still, okay?
Page two.
Page two, second paragraph. And I guess I need a little verification here that my understanding was correct. That second sentence currently, it says it was clarified there would be no further development or subdivision. My understanding wasn't that, my understanding was it was clarified that there are no current plans for further development or subdivision.
I think that's correct.
Right.
So I would suggest that change.
There were no current plans.
Cross out, would be no.
Yeah.
And add, clarified, there are no current plans for, and then keep further development or, and then add, or change the subdivision to subdivision. So again, it would read, it was clarified there are no current plans for further development or subdivision.
That I think is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And the reason why I get a little picky on that one is that, you know, a year from now, two years from now, if somebody calls back up those minutes.
Right.
Means time will differ.
Right, that's right, that's a good catch.
So.
That's an important catch.
I know, that's all I have on page two.
Okay.
On page three, I have two suggestions. Under the master plan. At the end, I'd like to add, so the current statement that says the draft was reviewed and discussed. I want to add, if I can read my own writing here. The drafter was reviewed and discussed and add with the request for the planning board members to revise slash edit as desired and bring to the next meeting. This had to do with the demographics draft. So again, the draft was reviewed and discussed with the request for planning board members to revise slash edit and as desired and bring to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then under other, second paragraph. Cross out the first word. And add, and make maps plural, because I think it was more than one we were talking about. So just say, town administrator, Kimon, state of Laura, contacted the Stratford Regional Planning Commission for missing maps. Cross out A and add the word, make it plural.
Yeah.
Then on the next sentence, I cross out Matt at, and just say, we requested it from Stratford Regional. So Chair Woby State, he has an email from Stratford Regional. I think it's not from, I think it's to, by the way. It wasn't.
No, it was from.
Was it from?
It was from.
But, okay, has there anything since, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
I just cross out Matt, because.
Yep.
First of all, I think it was Matt Sullivan, but.
Right.
Matt, I don't know who Matt, he's not there anymore, so I just say from Stratford Regional.
Just so you know, we have him.
I know.
Just so everyone else knows, we have maps.
Laura was successful in. Laura was successful in.
They were here all the time.
No, we had to get another copy.
These are new copies from Stratford.
These are new copies. Yep. Do we have a CD or are we digital?
I don't want to do that, because they sent me a PDF.
Okay. They sent you PDFs?
So we have both digital, digital form and.
Nice.
Nicely printed. Good job, Laura.
Yep.
So those are my, those are my minute suggestions.
What, I will not bring inventory of maps once I add these things, right?
Right.
I was just gonna ask, does that mean though that we still have the task of going through the ordinances? And ensure there are maps that correspond to.
Laura's working that up.
I've started working on that, creating a spreadsheet to take the inventory of maps and list where they are mentioned in the zoning ordinances.
Right.
Excellent.
Yeah, so that means you can go through the whole ordinance and say, this is a map we, that was referenced. It's old or missing. Here's the new map that can, can replace it, or whatever. We'll just have to go through each map reference through the whole ordinance like that.
I was just reading the ordinance today on the, what's the center of town district, I forgot the name for it.
Town, yeah.
Town residential, whatever.
Town center mixed use district.
That's it, town center mixed use. And I read that, you know, the road map, you know, from this road to that road, didn't make any sense to me. I was, I mean, I know all these roads, but I could not put that piece of land together.
Okay.
But it states that it's in the maps.
Right.
And that's the kind of thing that we gotta make sure there really is a map that shows all that.
Yeah, I can basically follow it.
I knew the roads, but boy, it just didn't add up to me, it didn't make sense to what I thought. Maybe the town center mixed use district is a different area than I thought.
We're in the middle of it right now.
So it just didn't add to me.
Task road.
So can I ask a question, Laura, the PDF file, so is that something we could download off the website?
I don't have it on the website at this time.
Yeah, I.
Is it something?
But there's no reason it couldn't, there's no reason it couldn't be put on there.
Right, we're getting ready to reconstruct, and I just assume wait until he's done tweaking before we put it on there, so I don't lose.
Yeah.
But I think, I think the point is well taken, is that it'd be good, I mean, it's public information.
Yeah, once we get, I think once, I think we should, we might want to hold on to that until we get, go through the ordinance and get all the correct maps referenced, then we can put them on and say. They're front here.
I mean, the maps do stand independent, but I understand your point.
Right. Otherwise, people will start getting confused. You have this map on the website, but what's its relevance?
Well, the reason I'm asking is because somebody asked me about the Mary meeting.
Watershed.
Watershed overlay, and they were looking for it on a map, and I sent them to hear.
Wouldn't be there yet.
Yeah.
We do have a map, it was, map was part of the, part of the thing, so you could show them that.
Now whether it's in Laura's file with it yet, I don't know.
At this, yeah, until the website is re-updated, we're gonna have to hold on to that.
Okay.
Or we publish that on the site.
At the risk of point of order, we do have to have an action on this.
Yes. Are we done going through it? We went, we're done going through, yeah, so if there's any other discussion on minutes? I'll hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, what's the date?
First?
March 23rd, 2017, as amended.
March 21st.
March 21st.
Oh, March 21st, oh, I had the wrong, sorry.
What is?
Wrong committee.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
None.
Okay. Uh, any mail?
Just that one that I showed you.
What did you show me?
You told me I can do some more research on for you.
Okay, don't mind me, I'll let it go. This one?
Yeah, no, did I give you a copy? No, the one.
No, that's, that's that list, okay.
The one on the estuaries.
Right. Okay. Okay, new old business. Started with the master plan.
Okay.
Plans.
Demographics, we'll follow up on the minutes first. If anybody has any comments or suggested additions, edits, changes.
On the demographics.
On the demographics section, I'd be more than happy to get them and get it done.
I haven't had a chance to look at it, it's probably good. I don't know.
Probably, no. A small joke.
How dare you?
Small joke.
If other people have read it and they have no comments, then it's.
Again, I'm not, I don't want to force the issue tonight, but I just want to make sure we keep it moving, so if you could.
Right.
Please have that.
Right. We'll do.
Get it done by the middle of April, next meeting would be okay, but.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Right, we want to get some.
So then what I add to your pile then too, I won't say we pile, what, I can add to your pile. I have gotten all the inputs from all the assignments for the responsibility and measures of achievement or success. I have had conversations with virtually everyone. And have come up with a draft of the master list right now. But I already have given Scott it, because I'm making sure he's gonna be here all the time, but also one for Laura. And I apologize that you may need a magnifying glass to read some of it, but I wanted to conserve a little bit of paper here in the middle.
One more.
Or am I not supposed to take one?
You're not supposed to take one, you're.
I take them because I already gave one to you. Right?
Yes.
Or one?
Different problem.
One come back to me.
There we go.
You got one more?
Got it.
Again, I'm not asking you to read it tonight, obviously.
Nope.
But, reading through. One comment is that, as I was going through there, there are two or three points I would want to make. First of all, I think everyone did a very nice job at getting that through, and appreciate everybody's work on that. As I went through it, there are some redundancies. An example, communication is a primary one, this communication appears in two or three different ones. It may be fine, but as you read it through, think if we want to keep it in there, or if we want to make a central one in one of them. It may be fine where it is, I'm just saying that that is a option. There is also a couple of other redundancies. Some between natural resources and some other areas is an example, which primarily may be natural resources, and all that kind of stuff. Then finally, there are at least three or four that you'll see in the blank, in the middle of the, you know, where the strategy column is. You'll see two question marks in three or four, or two or three of them. And one of them was my section, which said something about off-road something or other, and I said, I have no way of knowing how to measure that, not even sure we want to keep it there. So what I'm saying to you, suggesting to you is, those that have question marks now, look at it and determine whether you think it should stay or we should pull it, as well as anything else there as you read it through. Think about whether it belongs there, or if it's still appropriate and all that. But we are, quite frankly, nearing the end, provided we can get the demographics thing done and this one done. I think we are then almost ready. I would like to do one more revisit of the vision, now that we've done all this, just sign a circle back and make sure that that, because it was 2013, I think, that we did that.
Yeah.
So just kind of circle back to make sure that that's still okay, but I would like to do that only after we've done all this other work. One additional point is, once, once you've got through this, and feel free to give me any suggested changes you have, I'll make them before the next meeting or as soon as you have it. And then once we finalize this, I'll make this more readable, so bigger print and all that kind of stuff, so don't worry about that. It's just, I didn't want 25 pages here, I wanted to make it fairly, fairly small, which is still 11 pages, but. So, again, there's a bit of homework left, demographics. I think it's fairly straightforward, to be honest with you, I mean, you know, I'm not saying whether it's good or bad, I'm just saying, a lot of this space there is graphs and stuff, so there's not a lot of reading, the first two pages are, but after that, there's not a lot.
Yeah.
This one does take a little bit more time and thought, so. If you would be so kind as to.
Do you want to send up an electronic version of this?
I can do that, yeah, what I'll do is I'll send it to Laura and have her send it up, okay?
So what do you ask?
There definitely is overlap, though.
Yeah, there is, and that, there's nothing necessarily wrong with that, just make a conscious decision where you think it's okay.
Well, it can lead to confusion, because if you answer.
If it's different, yeah.
If you implement different measures of achievement and different responsibilities, and it's the same thing, then that's gonna be confusing.
But, yeah, and I agree with that, that's why I make the comment about there are some redundancy. You know, the flip side of that is, on the communication piece, it may be perfectly right to have communication in two or three different sections, because you want to communicate certain things in one section and different things in another section. So I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm just saying, kind of critically, you know, make a decision whether you think it's appropriate to keep it there or not.
Right, you just might want to take that duplicative item and put it in one place.
Yeah, possibly, that's possible.
And span the responsibility.
Right.
Parts of it.
Possible.
Or something like that, just unify it, put it in choose where, put it in one place.
Right.
Okay, as an example, because I was reading when you were talking, so I missed the direction.
It's okay.
First of all, I'm glad you can read it, because I was.
Question mark. Well, thanks to my new eyeballs.
Okay. So you're on page one?
Cataract surgery is wonderful, on page seven. Okay, if question marks encourage and value balanced representation on all boards and committee. Question mark, question mark. That would be the responsibility of the board of selectmen, measures of achievement. Is it the measures of achievement that you're not sure?
No, it could be a variety of things, I do happen to remember why, but question. This really, I think this is redundant, and that's why that was question mark, so.
Okay.
But that's not necessarily for every time there's a question mark, but in this case, I remember that one. I think this is covered by another one, perhaps even in the same section, or maybe even under the same goal, anyway.
Okay.
So that, you know. You know, another example is, you'll see on page 11.
Questions is redundant with Scott's section to promote managed zoning, mixture of residential business and public use, and I'm almost sure I saw that.
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
In the, this thing under, under Scott's.
No, page 10, sorry, on page 10, I actually missing one piece on page 11, which is my section. On page 10, you'll see a question, double question mark, about the third row up. We have utilized best practices for non-vehicle transport. I have no clue how you're gonna measure that, and I'm not even sure it should stay there, but that's, that's one example.
You mean bicycle trails or something like that?
Well, again, that's.
Not even sure what you're referring to.
Those are covered elsewhere, too, so that's, my immediate thought was, yeah, bike trails, or hiking, or whatever, or ATV, whatever. But biking trails is covered in another section.
Yeah.
I, you know. I just said, I have no clue. Help me out.
I have a minor comment for you. I saw biannual in a couple of places.
Yep.
Do you mean twice a year?
Biannual is every other year?
It's biennial.
Oh, uh.
That's right, Wisk, you're right, with an E.
Triennial is with an E.
Biennial with a plant is, it is two years.
Okay, so we'll do a search.
Biannual is twice a year.
Biannual with an A is twice a year. Biennial with an E is once every two years.
I actually did a thesaurus. I actually did a thesaurus word, and I did have, it did show every other year for that with the A. But I will go double check.
Check that out.
Triennial, I know isn't, you'll see triennial a couple of times. That's every third year.
Third year.
But I did, I did actually do a biennial. I said, okay, is this, because I have the same question. Is biennial twice a year or every other year? I did a, I did a definition and I've gone up with every other year, so, but I will check.
I'll just load it up a number of times.
I will check.
Anyway, that's my answer.
All right. Great.
This looks good. I like this.
Yep.
Now comes the question of translating it into, into action.
Well, I think that's what's seen it though.
To us. Yes, absolutely.
Those all, yeah, it falls to all, all the different named responsible parties.
Yeah, only translate it into action if it becomes an expectation.
Exactly.
And when it becomes an expectation.
Some of it in my section, I believe, requires us to enact additional zoning regulations too.
Some of it, yep.
If, if you're going to say this is what you want in your town, but you don't require it, and developers or developers don't do it, then it's meaningless.
Right.
So I think we do have a lot of, a lot of work ahead, but that's, that's good.
I'll do a word search and change that.
Okay.
Get the evidence, yeah.
All right.
Should I do a quick check?
Any other comments on this? And we'll move on. Marining watershed overlay district.
Oh, oh, wait, no, but, yeah, I have two others after that, so, okay.
Yeah, you have two others after that. We're not done yet. So, um, you all received an email?
I have your email.
Uh, so I, um, I went through the ordinance, the existing zoning ordinance, and I inserted our new chapter after those deep slopes, I think it was, just before the, um, after all the overlay districts. And just before the, um, what do you call it, impact fee ordinance chapter. I did, in the, in the email, I asked Scott can then to forward this to town council, so whoever that is. He did so, and I got a response back. Pretty much most, most of what he said is, is, one of, most of his comments were all okay. Where we put it, the chapter we put it in is fine. The definitions, he has commented about moving the definitions into the definitions chapter is that, um, by moving them into that chapter, it makes those definitions relevant to the entire ordinance versus just the chapter they're in. He said they didn't exist anywhere else in the ordinance. I didn't think they did either, and anyway, that's fine. I don't think that has a problem for us anyway. Even if they did exist elsewhere in the ordinance, it potentially could be a problem, but, uh, the last time we modified, we worked through the whole ordinance, when Paul and I did that, we moved all the definitions, um, into the one definitions chapter, and we checked through the relevance, and it was all good anyway, so...
Was there about what, four definitions or something in there?
Three or four, yeah.
Yeah, skyline and ridge.
Right. And so those were all fine. His, only his comment was by moving them to the, that other chapter makes them relevant across the whole ordinance. That's not a problem, so we're good on that.
Okay.
He did... What was his other? He did get another comment.
Purpose and authority, oh, the next one.
Right. I think he had, there was something here. Hold on a minute. Give me a second.
Is this the same council that we spoke with?
Yes, it's, uh, Richard Sager.
Just as a clarification point, uh, the county has not had, does not have official council at this time, but we are in the process of, of looking at the bids that came in for that and, and making that decision. You know, get the select board complete first and then we'll work that through.
Right.
Was his firm one of them, or can you tell us?
There are five, I think, different firms that came in. Of which he, he was, his firm was one that bid, but there are four others.
Okay.
Whether he is a down selector or not, that will be up to the board as a whole, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, my comment about, um, making the purpose and authority more uniform, um, he advised that we leave it the way it is and propose next year, housekeeping ordinance change to, to do that, make that kind of a change, so we'll leave that. Minor grammatical changes are fine, assuming they don't change the alter or intent of the ordinance.
Right.
Capitalization periods are fine. Commas can be dangerous. A comma can change the intent of a sentence, so be careful with those. About the signature page, you said the signature page is not required by law. We've done it, so I've already spoken to Stephanie, um, and I got that info. I can put that in.
That is, it's not prohibited, given, given that it wasn't part of the initial warrant article. It's not prohibited.
Right.
Just a clarification.
Our practice is to note when each change occurs. And I think that was it.
So it sounded like it's pretty well...
Yeah. So we're good. So I think, I think we're set.
Put it in.
Yeah, so...
I don't think it needs any, does it need any official action from the planning board, or?
Um, I'll just say, I'll have to create the title page, that, that signature page, and then we'll sign it. And once that's done, we can...
I mean, the vote to take the president, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's in, it's in effect now. The new chapter is, the voting, the vote was certified. It's in effect, so, um, we're good to go. I will create that page, give it to Laura. We'll, the next meeting, we'll all sign it, and then we'll make a copy for everyone to stick in their folder. And we'll make that, we'll make that signature page part of the whole ordinance for the public.
Good.
So, did we want to mention that thing in Concord? Remember you and I talked about that bill in Concord?
Oh, the one that they had a hearing on today? I can mention, I didn't have it on the, on the...
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's an interesting wrinkle that's floating out there.
A wrinkle?
In fact, I actually heard it on the news today.
Yeah.
There was a hearing today. There is a, I think it's Senate Bill 108, is what it's called, but the hearing today was in the House. That, uh, that the Speaker of the House and, and a few others wish to have legislation passed that would require any town that had a postponement in their election date to hold another election on May 23rd to ratify the election that was postponed. There are about 80, roughly 80 communities in New Hampshire that did postpone their date, their election date. I wrote a eight or nine point position statement and asked Scott, I had to be in another state, so I asked Scott to bring that to Concord today and submit, and read and submit opposing the legislation, legislature, oh, sorry, legislation, uh, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which, uh, there are two or three points, and I won't go to them all, but the two or three points are, if that legislation passes, what you're saying is that anybody that cast a vote on the first election didn't count.
Right.
By the way, just as a backup, the legislation that is proposed, and if it passes and is signed by the governor, would indicate that if a town chooses, as I understand, it's a little bit in flux in terms of its interpretation, but if a town chooses not to hold May 23rd election, then that prior election is null and void, and everything goes back to the way it was. All right, now, there, there is some modifications and amendments that may change that a little bit, so don't hold that to define, but that was part of the initial issue.
Right.
So back, back to these, back, and there are some other issues too. The, the, as I said, there are, I had eight or nine points. I've only described two or three here. One of them is the one I already described, which is that basically what you're saying, if it passes, that any vote that was cast on that postponed date is null and void. Second thing is that it causes, in my opinion, hardship to the voter, to require them to come out and vote again about something they've already voted on unnecessarily.
Things change over time.
Third part, it is a, it is an unbudgeted, unnecessary, and totally unproductive cost to the town.
Right.
Not only for the entire employees, but for the, for the site that you're going to hold it and all that other kind of stuff.
Right.
And then I had another six points.
Right.
I will tell you one statement that I did put in there, which was, in what universe do you think this benefits in any way, any municipality in New Hampshire?
Right.
Yeah, I had a little bit of, I probably, I understand that, but still.
Good statement.
I mean, it's just, it just boggles the mind. But anyway.
How many communities didn't?
I think it's around 80, is what I heard.
Eighty?
Yeah.
There was a democratic, democratic proposition or piece of legislation to just have the House to make a simple declaration, all municipal votes cast this year are valid.
Right.
Blanket, just make the, have the House pass a blanket resolution, just validating all of them.
Yeah, that does, that does have its problems too, because if the legislature votes that in, that could potentially, in my opinion, I'm not legally an expert necessarily here, but that could preempt any contest or challenge. It says, if you ratified it, then you can't challenge because now the votes are all done and counted and...
Right.
So that has its problems too. My issue is, and, and I will tell you the concluding paragraph I gave in my statement. My issue is that I've read both the, there are two RSA's that, that apply. I've read both of them. I don't think it's that ambiguous, but I understand the position that has, someone has argued of, there is a phrase there that could be interpreted in a very obscure way, to be a little bit ambiguous perhaps in one of them. So my statement and conclusion was, um, rather than spend your time unproductively in this piece of legislation, which causes all these other issues, why don't you spend your time more constructively if you feel there's ambiguous language in the current RSA's to correct that?
Right, correct the legislation and, and backdate it to the...
That was my, that was my conclusion statement, so, yeah. So that, like I said, I had another five, four or five points, but that was basically...
So this came from the Speaker?
Speaker of...
Well, it was actually, yeah, I'm told that the Speaker of the House is one of the people that wants to drive this new legislation. But it is a Senate bill, my understanding is a Senate bill introduced, and the Senate had some discussion on it. And it may be, I, I'm not quite clear whether it's in the reconciliation process, or my understanding, today's House hearing was pre any vote from the House, but I don't know what's happened today. Um, as I said, I asked Scott to attend on behalf of New Durham. I asked him to present the statement that, that I've given and, uh, in opposition to the legislation. Uh, my understanding, and Laura informed me when I came in. The meeting, the, the hearing started originally 11 o'clock. We're supposed to start 11 o'clock this morning. I don't think Scott got out until like four, after four o'clock this afternoon, so...
Yeah, there are probably any town administrators there.
Well, I suspect there was a lot of opposition, yeah.
Probably.
I mean, I don't know the facts because I haven't had a chance to talk to Scott yet, but, uh, but yeah. So, anyway.
Well, I'm just thinking, what does that do to regional school district?
Well, that was one of my arguments.
It blows everything up.
That was one of my arguments. And if the school district chose to have a different election date, then, I guess by, by the, we mandated 23rd. So, but, yeah, that was my argument, is that the school, you know, all the people that are on the board, all of the, uh... And the, and if you have some, in our case, you have some towns in the region that had the vote on that date, and you had some towns in the region that had votes on a postponed date.
Right.
It, 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 it makes no sense.
If you spent, if you went, if you passed a, a vote just to buy a new truck, for instance, and you bought it yesterday.
Right.
And then it becomes null and void. The town votes to invalidate the vote, you have a legal expenditure, and the board of selectmen are in jail for misappropriation of funds. So it's a disaster.
And, and this is written to be retroactive?
Well, it's, it's, it's not retroactive. It, it would say that if the town has the choice to, to hold the ratification vote on May 23rd, if they choose not to, when you say it's retroactive, if that's what you mean, if they choose not to, then those votes may not, may not count.
They may not, yeah. I think the way it was worded is if you don't hold the vote, then someone could potentially sue the town.
Right.
Over that clause in the, of that weird clause.
But they can do that anyway.
Right, but if you do, but if you do hold the ratification and the town votes no...
Right.
Then the vote never did nothing, then the vote never took place.
I will tell you another one of my arguments, which, which, you know, so I wasn't going to go into all eight or nine of them, not that I have all of them memorized either necessarily, but, but, um, that was one of my arguments, is that if you, if you hold the election on May 23rd, and say you had, just arbitrarily, say you had 500 votes on the originally postponed date, but you had 50 votes on the May 23rd.
Right.
And those 50 said, no, I don't ratify.
Right.
You're going to tell me you have ruled by minority, which doesn't make any sense.
Right.
So...
No, it's a bad idea.
Yep, you had a class action lawsuit of eighty municipalities suing the, suing Concord.
So, anyway.
So that could be a real mess.
Stay tuned. And again, I guess the point here is that, you know, depending on what you, you know, how would you like your legislator to come down on that issue, you should contact them and let them know of your desire of how they'd like to see the vote.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't indicate how you should. I'm just saying, you should contact them to let them know what you think.
Okay.
I have two other things.
Do you have the bill number?
SB 108.
Is it 108?
That's what I, that's what I recall.
It is SB 108, that's what Scott said.
There you go.
And just for information, just for information's sake, the Senator, Senator Gray out of Rochester, and our, and our representatives, our Representative Walper and Representative Harrington, just as an FYI.
Yep.
I, I have two other...
You do.
Points.
And Senator is Jim Gray, did you say that?
Pardon?
Gray, yeah.
Jim Gray.
Jim, James Gray and Michael Harrington and Kurt Walper.
Yep.
Those are the representatives. Okay, I have two other things. Um, as I think we noted at the last board of selectmen meeting, Stratford Regional Planning Commission had, was scheduled at that time, had a meeting now on March 30th, in which they had a list of projects that New Durham had submitted. I wasn't clear of when that was submitted, because we at the Board of Selectmen didn't do anything officially to submit it, as far as I know. And I don't remember having ever come up on the planning board, at least the last two years.
This was a 10, 10-year transportation.
Yeah, but there were projects that, uh, that each town in theory was, was to submit. They had a list from New Durham, which I, as I said, I didn't recall.
It might have been the, the last time they did this 10-year plan, which may have been five years ago.
I think it was 2015 is what they said, but I don't know. Anyway, um, uh, they would like a feedback and, and they were under some time pressure, so I was told we'd try to have a feedback by this coming Friday. What I said is that we would bring it up as a discussion point for the planning board, and I would also bring it up as a discussion point for the Board of Selectmen on Thursday night. Doc, you were at the meeting also, but there were about, I think, like six to eight projects that they had on this list. I unfortunately didn't bring the list, but I do have the three projects that, that were probably the top projects, at least based on what the outcome of the discussion of that meeting was. Um, and that was, uh, in no, in no priority order, and that's the purpose for this point. One is, um, Tash Road, Route 11, safety improvements. The second was Depot Road and Route 11, safety improvements. And the third was the sidewalk between the school through the playground, the ball field. You know, whatever that means. As I said, there were another three or four projects. All of those other three or four projects were road-related also, but based on input from the public safety, i.e. both fire and police, the others, in their opinion, were not as high of reading as those two I just described. So, well, I'm suggesting that, for instance, we're considering that, 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 that's the list right there.
Yeah, that's it.
You mind?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Sidewalk, I already talked about. Route 11 Davis Crossing was another one. Tash Road I talked about. Route 11 Depot Road I talked about. Uh, there was one from Powder Mill, Fish Hatchery, which was pedestrian safety improvements. There was another one where Route 11 and Quaker Road and Valley Road were intersections, intersection safety improvements. And the last one was a park and ride on Route 11. That one, well, still may be on the listing, that one was probably a more steep, um, Route 11 kind of scenario than New Durham itself. So the ones that, as I said, the ones from that meeting that seemed to, Terry, you were there too.
Yep.
Uh, sorry for opening that up here.
That's okay. I was only there a moment.
Yeah, I, I didn't pick that up initially, so I apologize. But the ones that, can get correct me if I'm wrong, the ones that kind of was, was generated from the public safety side was the Tash Road, the Depot Road, Route 11 is Tash Road, Route 11 Depot Road. And then I think I probably put more emphasis on the sidewalk one, because that's part of our master plan issue, so...
What, what is it that we're asking Stratford Regional Planning Board to do with regard to those projects?
What, each town submits X number of projects that they would like to have some consideration for, usually financial consideration, oftentimes grants, goes into perhaps sets a comprehensive economic development strategy, uh, or it goes into other regional kinds of planning documents. And then from that, um, we would advocate to get some help from Stratford Regional Planning Commission and others to get federal help, part of which we would match with local funds, you know, that, you know, could be 80, 20, it could be 50. to get federal help, part of which we would match with local funds, you know, it could be eighty, twenty, it could be fifty, fifty, it could be whatever.
So they would research and provide us with, with a plan that would say, if you want to go forward with this, this is where sources of funding might exist, that kind of thing, is that, is that what they would?
I mean, that could be part of it, it's more that this is what the, what Durham in this case has priority on for their transportation related projects. And that we would like to find ways to have Stratford Regional Planning or other, you know, the region help us find funding sources, you know, understand, help us understand, build a rationale of why, why we think that's important and all that, so we can go after grants ourselves if we wish, or have them help us with going after grants, yeah.
Right.
That's kind of the purpose.
And is the thought that, you know, especially these intersections, Depot Road, Tash Road, Davis Crossing Road, is the thought of looking into streetlights, is that, is that basically?
Safety improvements, basically.
Anything they could suggest to.
Right.
And they also really recommended that we really tie it to, and I thought that we really referred to our master plan, we tie it to benchmarks in the community, that real community goals, like increasing safety on the Route eleven corridor. I mean, our police department can document fatalities on the last five years of both of those intersections.
Right.
We focused on the intersections because that, that's the high-risk area. And some of the issues in the master plan to do with recreation and community wellness, you know, with all the emphasis on.
Can be the parking lot there.
Safety for our children going from the school, having access to the, you know, making it a community.
Daycare, ball field.
Community walking path, all of that, if we could tie that into some kind of a comprehensive picture that actually tied into our master plan, I think it maximized our ability to achieve a higher priority because this was an old list. This was a list that they had seen before, nothing had they looked.
I remember you, I remember when David Allen was here years ago, he came to us, I think that's where this is coming from.
And that's, that's why I asked the question, how do we bump ourselves up? And that's, that was kind of what they indicated.
But also they mentioned tying it in regionally.
Regionally?
Regionally, with other towns.
You could, yeah, you could. I'm not sure any of those three does that, except for calling Route eleven a corridor, that Route eleven corridor.
Right.
It impacts the whole corridor.
Right. Well, I think, I mean, I think just adding, as far as on Route eleven, I think adding turning lanes. Because whenever I come, I come, you know, down from anywhere in the north, down eleven, to turn left on Davis Crossing to go home, I hold my breath.
You take your life in your hands, yeah.
Because I'm upset, Doc, because people are going zooming right by me at sixty miles an hour.
The reason for me bringing this up here is two-fold, one is for informational pieces, but the other more, more importantly is, do you want to add any other projects to that? And if not, or even if so, what priority you want to put on that, so we can communicate to them what the planning boards on the Board of Selectmen's comments on Friday.
Okay.
This coming Friday.
Yeah.
So again, just to reiterate what the three that kind of rose to the top during that part of the discussion was, again, in no particular order, Tash Road, safety, Tash Road, Route eleven, safety improvements, Depot Road and Route eleven, safety improvements, and sidewalk opportunities between the school, library, daycare and ball field. Quite frankly, I think all three of them tie into the master plan in some way.
Right.
Well, could you, could you combine Tash Road, Davis Road, Depot Road, Route eleven, as you said, combine those as safety on the Route eleven corridor in a regional context?
You could, the issue becomes then what each one costs. If I, I can, each one is something around, you know, three quarters of a million to a million dollar project, each one. I'm, we're calling for memory here, but.
Right, you're pretty close. For whatever reason, Route eleven and Davis Crossing was one point nine.
If you build it larger, it becomes more cost prohibitive from getting that large of a grant.
Okay, now, now that's a state road though, I mean, what would.
Route eleven is, Tash Road's not, Depot Road's not.
No, but any improvements on Route eleven, turn lanes, for example, that would be the responsibility of the state if that.
Right, but what you want to do is, is, I do know that the state is looking at doing some resurfacing or other work on Route eleven next year.
Right, so now is the time.
Well, possibly, yeah.
Lane widening changes.
Right.
Because they're going to do something there anyway, they don't want to repave the road and then dig it up the year after.
Problem with Depot Road is it's not a right angle.
Right, so you would want to, you would want to straighten the ends of those roads out or something.
Well, not only Depot Road, but Tash Road is even more so.
Right.
Tash Road is even more so skewed.
Because it's an acute angle, if you're coming from the south, you have to take an acute angle.
Yes.
Right.
I, I like those top three priorities, I guess the one that I would like to see added for consideration is the safety issue of not only the Fish Hatchery, just that whole area, that whole half mile around the intersection of South Shore, North Shore.
Lake Road.
And meaning, Laverne. With the new camp there, with the Fish Hatchery, with the summer traffic, that I see as a very hazardous area.
Has it, has it been?
Pedestrian injuries, car accidents.
Any issue, any, any actual safety issues?
Another thing, I don't know, Steve, we would have to consult with the police department because they would have the log of accidents there.
I don't, I don't recall any being there, I don't recall here.
The issue, I think, which, I don't know that there's very, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't know there's been anything over that area either, with one caveat, and that is that there is a definite increase in pedestrian traffic around the dam and the town beach and all that area over the last one to three years. So it may still be early in its history for that statement.
Yeah, because when did the town beach open? What year did the town beach open, do you remember?
Oh, golly.
Just want to know.
When was it already, or no longer than that?
At least eight to ten years ago, I think.
At least, at least.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's been of some duration, but it's becoming.
That might be fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
I think it's just there's playing more people out blocking, running dogs.
Exactly.
Yeah, fifteen.
And it's year-round now.
And maybe it's something we should do an informal study of or ask the police department, the highway department to do an informal study of. But I really predict that that could be a trouble spot.
They did a study when the camp went in because they were doing crosswalks and the lights and all that.
They did a tropic study up there.
Already, and I know that information's out there, I remember hearing about it, so.
But that was all in granting.
I know that, but I mean, that was a study.
We have some time with it in operation to see, and I want to know.
This was before it was even there, they were taking the study before the, before the camp went in.
The flip side of that is that, you know, the camp from a vehicular, vehicular traffic perspective, maybe somewhat increased particularly on in and out days, that is, when the campus come in.
Friday and Sunday.
But during the week itself is not, you know, but a much more pedestrian, much more pedestrian traffic, you know, season round.
Back and forth. So, so the request there would be for them to investigate, what are the possibilities for what might be done? Now, how would you manage that pedestrian traffic? Is that what we'd ask them to do? Walking trails, sidewalks, you know, could you reroute pedestrian traffic around that intersection somehow by going some, a different route? I don't know.
You should go through some.
No different route there.
Yeah, most of the traffic is to the lake.
No different route.
Yeah.
It's from the beach down to the hatchery.
Do you make a pedestrian bridge over the spillway to get people off the road? Why couldn't you build a pedestrian bridge over the spillway?
There are alternatives, somebody, you know, but I think we would need to see if that would, you know, is justified maybe by talking to the police department, getting some kind of a log of accidents or.
Yeah.
So again, just to kind of bring it back to point, we have now four project potentials. I'd just like to get some priority from the planning board to see which, which ones you think.
Do these cost the town money to do the studies?
Yeah, to do the study, yeah, probably, depending what study you need. SRPC can do certain things like traffic counts, help with that and all that, but depending on what study you need.
Okay, the three that you're, that are.
Yeah, we're not talking studies here, perhaps with the exception of Mary Mead.
Talking priority.
We're talking actually.
Priority construction.
Road safety improvement.
Right.
Yeah, or talk, as I said, they're about three quarters to a million, three quarters of a million to a million dollar kind of projects. So that it's not so much a study there, it's, it's actual work.
So, so there's already a plan in place for what might be done, for example, Depot Road.
For a couple of them, I think, I believe Tash Road and Depot.
Turning lanes, just kind of squaring off the intersections and creating turning lanes.
I believe there are, you know, potential, you know, concepts anywhere.
So the challenge right now is just funding those projects?
Well, the immediate challenge is what's your priority?
Right.
And then.
Right.
I would say Route eleven, Barry Road, Depot Road would be my number one priority.
Yeah. Route eleven corridor, yeah.
Well.
I mean, is each one of those.
Depot Road or Tash Road.
Each one separate?
Yes, they are separate, yeah, they are separate. So the question is Depot Road or Tash Road?
Depot Road would come first.
I think, I don't know which has more accidents.
I will, you, you name, you name your priority and then I'll tell you what public safety said.
Depot.
Doc, were you still there?
Route eleven Depot.
Were you still there or?
I don't think so.
I thought I heard Quaker Road.
Well, that was on the list, yeah.
That was one on the list.
But these, these three, and then the Mary Mead one added, these three were the ones, as I said, from that meeting that came out as being the, the thought to be the most likely.
Depot Road would have to get way more traffic than any of the other.
Oh, which has more accidents.
Again, so what you're saying is Depot Road, Depot Road is first, Tash Road, then I'm assuming you're saying the second? And then sidewalk would be third?
Yes.
Okay.
I will tell you what public safety said, they had the first two reversed.
Yeah.
They said Tash Road was by far more dangerous.
Because, because it's more skewed?
Yeah.
No, because they come from twenty-eight down Stockbridge Corner and out Tash Road. That is a.
Yeah, I do, I was there with that.
Stockbridge.
Were you there for that?
Yeah, and I did, I.
That is a highway out Tash Road.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
The Tash Road extension, they come twenty-eight, down Stockbridge Corner, across the Valley Road and out Tash Road extension.
All right, that's good, yeah.
Has the highest.
Again, that doesn't mean that's what you should be, I'm just, I'm just giving you the benefit of what that conversation was at that meeting. So, I will, I will, you know, I said the Board of Selectmen go through the same priority. And, you know, I, my guess is whether it's Tash or Depot, one, one wants two, so.
Right.
And the sidewalk third, but that's my guess, I'll, I'll, Selectmen, I can't prejudge that, but that's my guess is how they'll come out too.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so that's what we'll come back with to them on Friday.
Yep.
Last item I have, we're getting up to nine o'clock here, is just a promotional deal that there is a cyanobacteria meeting, sort of a quasi-organizational meeting on April thirteenth at seven o'clock at the Durham School. And the initiative is to be a little bit more regional in that we would, we've invited, oh, I say we, Milfoil Committee maybe has taken a lead in this, and the invitations have gone out to Alton, whatever it is, Selectmen, Milfoil, all that kind of stuff, related people, and, and the public in Durham and Alton who are interested in this. I will tell you that I think from my perspective, this has, the cyanobacteria issue has a potential to be very, very significant to Durham. It affects land use, it affects property values, potentially, again.
Yeah.
So it is very, very critical from my perspective.
Yeah.
You know, I asked the Board of Selectmen to come, those remain in the Board of Selectmen to come with two or three projects that they'd like to see us work on in the next one to two years and one project that we can have a very definite impact to, to help Durham. This is one on my list, it's one of the top ones on my list, so.
Yeah.
I've had some work experience on the cyanobacteria side, more so from the algae to fuel side, but, so I understand some of the issues, some of the benefits of algae too, but, but this is not a benefit here, I get it to you.
There's too much phosphorus in the water, it's a problem, a simple problem, that's the.
Identifying the source and making sure you can mitigate that properly and all that, I mean.
That's the hard part.
Well, it is, identifying it's probably not all that difficult. It's finding solutions that are going to be difficult, but that can be done collaboratively and make sure you have enough funding to do it.
Are, are other towns experiencing this kind of algal bloom of the cyanobacteria?
In New Hampshire, the one that I'm familiar with, I think was up by Berlin.
Is bad, that happens every year.
A few years ago. I'm very familiar with one in Ohio, which actually I had some collaborative work done on the algae and the fuel project. There's a lake there which, which was already so contaminated, it's unbelievable, they, you can't swim in it. They put a wave runner or a jet ski in it in summer. You can see the wake is pure green, no blue, no, doesn't even look like water, it looks like pure green.
Peasoo.
You can't, you don't want that happening here.
At least it's not the bust again.
There, the Maumee River, in northern Ohio, the Maumee River flows into Lake Erie, Lake Erie, they have aerial views of Lake Erie during summer months, and Bob, you may have seen some of this too. Have aerial views that you can see the algae bloom, the cyanobacteria bloom in certain months for that Maumee River, which is flowing in. Most of the stuff, particularly on, on the lake that I talked about in Ohio, it's all agricultural runoff.
Yeah.
You know, fertilizers, dairy farms, all that kind of stuff, pig farms.
And PK.
So, again, my, my point here is I highly encourage attendance at April thirteenth at seven o'clock at the school, Durham School. That's my spiel.
Okay, that's the end of your spiel?
That's the end of my spiel.
Okay, any other spiels? If you're older, otherwise.
Just a question on old business, the zoning board of adjustment for the gravel pit meeting, has that been scheduled? Is that, is that on a docket?
Yep, it's Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at seven o'clock at the elementary school.
Week, week from today?
Yep.
Okay.
The eleventh, the eleventh, the eleventh?
Okay.
It'll be there? That's going to be at the school, right? So the eleventh at the school, the thirteenth at the school, very different subjects, so.
Also at seven PM, Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it? You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I actually, one, one quick thing, and I, I don't know if everybody got it or bounced back to me. The Bruce Mayberry Workforce Housing, Sonny, did that, did that come through to people?
I forwarded it.
Yes, I did, but I have not.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Laura, I think yours bounced back, I re-forwarded, hopefully you got it.
You sent the fact or a matter of fact?
I also had some information for you, I just remembered that, new building inspector brought you some information on accessory dwelling units and something else I can't remember, but therefore it's like Barrington's ordinances and stuff, what they've done this past year with that to give you some examples and stuff, plus a bunch of information from a training class.
Okay.
You've sent that to us already or you?
I did, I, he gave it to me the other day and it got reached to my desk this week, it's been.
And this is from the new guy, right, his name is John Addit?
John Addit.
And he's from where, Barrington, Barstow?
He lives in Barstow, he works in Barrington.
Okay.
He's the assistant?
In Barrington.
CEO there as well, in Barrington, is that what you said?
He's Deputy Building Inspector, whatever, or what else that goes with that title.
And that's what he is here as well, he is the deputy, the assistant?
No.
He's replacing.
He is going to be replacing, he's working with him now to transition.
Okay, so that's the person we're talking about. Is he, unless it's a question for both of you, is part of his understanding of his job description that he'd be available for planning board meetings when requested? Not every meeting.
When he's, when he's available, he also, like I said, he's a deputy in Barrington and he has his own business.
But yes, it is part of his job description.
It is part of his job.
He does know, and he's already, I've already talked to him and he's in the process of the zoning ordinances and stuff to get familiar with them, and I've asked him to, you know, keep things in mind, to look to see if he can see things that he thinks, you know, he should bring to you guys for adjustments or changes to, or recommendations. So he's wanting to do that as he's reading through and getting ready with them.
But did he live in Alton, why did he commit to Alton?
I live in Barstow.
Barstow, okay.
And Barrington, okay.
Yeah, Barrington.
I thought it was on Rich Road.
And lives in Durham.
No, and, and, Barrington, lives in.